For my advocate, please.
Now when God looks on me, it's not my sin he sees, nor any righteousness I've done.
He only sees his son, the holy risen one.
I made an heir through Christ to everlasting life, because his merit now is mine.
All my iniquity is cast into the sea.
There's no power or man who can change what I now am.
For in this moment at the Father's hand, my advocate pleads in the throne room of grace, with blood that he shed when he died in my place. Unworthy am I, yet God's pardon and divide is extended to me. For my advocate, please.
Now I can worship and pray.
With faith in his word, I can say, my advocate, please, in the throne room of grace, with blood that he shed when he died in my place. Unworthy am I, yet God's pardon and divide is extended to me. For my advocate, please. My advocate, please. My advocate, please.
Thank you. In just a moment, they're going to sing another set of hymns. But we are delighted that you're here. We're going to give you an opportunity to give back. And I've been told that nobody quite gives in the United Kingdom like the Ulster folks. And although this is a free meeting, we want to give you a chance to contribute to the work of the Crown College, and especially the work in mainland UK, the Crown Christian Heritage Trust. So I'd like our ushers to come along. They have been provided with chili and barbecue buckets. And I know that's just appropriate. I heard a long time ago of a gentleman in this nation, in this country, requesting that we have a silent offering. Do you know what I mean by that? Notes and checks would be just fine. We don't want any of those coins rattling around in those buckets, and we'll hear it if you drop it in. No, we don't mind. But we're so delighted that you have been so supportive of the work of Crown College in the United Kingdom. Most of you know that we've been laboring together in the UK for, since 2006, almost 20 years, church planting work, and the Lord has allowed us to plant 11 churches over that span of time. And the work continues to march forward by his grace and by his mercy. We can do nothing without him. We have not done anything. But he has chosen to use feeble servants like ourselves to promote Christ Jesus and the gospel. And we have been privileged. In the last couple of years, we've seen another two churches planted. They're in the early stages of being planted. One in the heart of Wales. You may remember that we planted a church on the edge of Wales during COVID. And Tristan White, he's an Englishman that we trained up at our Extension Campus in the United Kingdom there in Druittwich. Tristan is now pastoring that work. And we prayed on the sign entering into Welshpool, just across the border of England and into Wales. On the sign of Welshpool were these words, Welshpool, the gateway to Wales. And when God gave us that chapel building, we just believed that that would be the beginning of God's work in Wales. And sure enough, he's opened another door in a town in the center, right in the heart of Wales called Bilth. Bilth Wells, Wales. And the title, the motto for Bilth is "The Heart of Wales." So God's given us a chapel and the gateway to Wales, and now another one in the heart of Wales. So please pray. Of course, you know that Wales is the land of chapels and churches, a land of great revival. 1904 Welsh revival. We're praying that God would do the same thing and even greater in the days ahead. And then again, we've been given another chapel in Liverpool. Of course, you know about the church plant that took place many years ago, almost seven years ago, on Breck Road. And that church is growing. As you know, you heard about the recent purchase of the pub next door. Now, in England, you hear a lot about churches being turned into pubs, public houses. But what a wonderful thing to hear about a pub being turned into a church house. And we're praising God for that. That's exciting. But just a few miles down the road, in another region of Liverpool, God has given us another church, another church building, and that's in Norris Green. And we're rejoicing and praising God for that. Then, of course, we are in negotiations, speaking to several other places around the United Kingdom. We're excited. God's opened a door for us in the Netherlands. You may know that. In fact, we have a young couple now, a young family, who are on a survey trip. They believe God's called them to the Netherlands, graduates of Crown College. And they're with us for a couple of months in England, and then, of course, making trips regularly into the Netherlands and getting ready, God willing, to plant a church there. So we're thrilled about what God is doing. And then you may have heard recently of a recent endeavor in Zimbabwe, in Africa. We never would have imagined, we thought we would begin to reach out into the world from England, from the United Kingdom. Of course, we thought Europe's the closest, and then perhaps on through that way. But never did we think God would expand and extend our influence to the continent of Africa. But he's begun to do that, and we are thrilled about it all and excited. Now, I think I've talked enough to let you get your pockets empty and ready. If you haven't come prepared to give, that's okay. Nobody's going to condemn you. But we want to give folks a chance who have come prepared. If you'd like to give online, you can do so at thecrowncollege.edu. And you can do that at any time, and we would encourage you to do that. And these gentlemen are ready, and I want you to stand with me. We're going to sing. That makes it a bit easier to give when you sing. And when you're standing, you can reach your hands into your pockets. So let's stand together, and we're going to sing hymn number 50. Have you been to Jesus for the cleansing power? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? And as we sing, these lovely chili and barbecue buckets will be passed along your row. So be ready. Be ready to give. And if we're singing loud enough, we won't hear the tinkling of change in the bottom of the buckets. So you give and give generously, please. And everything that's given will be to the furtherance of God's work in the United Kingdom, the furtherance of church planting and gospel work. And we're so thrilled. Thank you for your willingness to be here and willingness to give. Dr. McCray, you come along and lead us. Hymn number 50, Have You Been to Jesus for the Cleansing Power? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? How many of you know you've been to Jesus for that cleansing power? Would you say amen? Good. Let's sing it like you have been then, hymn number 50, as we sing and as we give.
Have you been to Jesus for the cleansing power? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you fully trusting in his grace this hour? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In the soul-gleaming blood of the Lamb? Are your garments spotless? Are they white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you walking daily by the Savior's side? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Do you rest each moment in the crucifying wine? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In the soul-gleaming blood of the Lamb? Are your garments spotless? Are they white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? When the bridegroom comes, will your robes be white? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Will your soul be ready for the banishing light? And be washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In the soul-gleaming blood of the Lamb? Are your garments spotless? Are they white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Lay aside the garments that are stained by sin and be washed in the blood of the Lamb? There's a fight in flowing for the soul of plea. Oh, be washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In the blood, in the soul-gleaming blood of the Lamb? Are your garments spotless? Are they white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb?
Amen. You may be seated. Choir, you may be seated as well. We've done something a little different tonight. We haven't done this at all on this tour. We always have a gospel message over the last several nights, but we divided the night really into two halves. You've heard the first half of the choir selections. They're going to come back and sing another several songs in just a moment. But Mr. Zinker is going to bring just a brief message, a brief thought on the gospel, and I want you to have your hearts and minds ready. Don't switch off. Some of you think, well, I've come to hear singing. I didn't come to hear preaching. Well, what do you think singing is? It's still preaching. And this is just another method of preaching. So sit tight for just a moment. And as soon as he's done, the choir is going to stand and sing another selection of songs, which I know will be a blessing. But I want you to pray with me. Would you do that with me now? Let's pray. I know, look here for a moment, I know that in a congregation like this, there are bound to be people who are still lost, still dead in their sins. They might even be deceiving themselves into thinking that they are saved because they go to a place of worship every week, because they know the hymns, and they know all the Christian jargon. But do you know the Savior? And does he know you? Let's pray together, and then Mr. Zinker will come with a message that God's put on his heart. Father in heaven, we need thee. We thank thee for the words that we have heard sung and the words that we have sung. It's already been asked us in Psalm whether or not we've been to Jesus. And I pray that if there are some here that have never been to Christ, never been washed in the blood of the Lamb, then we pray that before this night is over, save them, Lord. Have mercy upon them. We pray that thy Spirit may move freely amongst us. He may awaken those who are still dead in trespasses and sins. Speak to us, we pray. Grant liberty, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you have a copy of the Word of God, would you please turn with me just for a few moments to the book of Matthew, Matthew, chapter 27. And while you're turning there, if you have a Bible, may I just say what a privilege it is. This is an amazing place, one of my very favorite places in the whole world, not just because of the beauty of this land, but because of so many out there in the audience who are very, very dear friends. And we're so grateful for your continued prayers. God is blessing in a great way at Temple Baptist Church and at the Crown College, and Pastor Derek Moreland is doing a wonderful job as God is using him to lead that ministry. And we're so thankful for how God works. Could I just say a brief personal note? Thank you so much. My wife and I are here this evening, and several of you have asked about our children. We have three children, Elsa, William, and Greta. And William, as many of you know, nearly went to heaven just a few years ago. He was very ill, and we were told by the doctors that he would not live. And then we were told by the doctors that if he did somehow live, that he would be a vegetable. He would never be able to communicate, never be able to think clearly, or do anything that a normal child would do. He lost the use of his limbs in many ways. And so many of you prayed for him. And I want you to know tonight, William is a very happy nine-year-old. He's doing great at school. God is using him. He wants to preach the gospel someday. And he still has some difficulty with walking and using his hands. But would you continue to pray for William Zinker? He doesn't miss a prayer meeting. He's at every meeting at the church, and he loves the Lord, and he wants people to know about Jesus. He goes to the state school, and he takes gospel tracts with him to hand out to his teachers. So you pray for William, that he'll continue to live for the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you so much for your prayers, for our family, and especially for our boy. I hope you found your place in Matthew, chapter 27. Very briefly this evening, I'd just like to draw your attention on this Passion Week, as we remember the death of Christ and his burial and his resurrection. Notice with me in Matthew 27, verse 33, "And when they were coming to a place called Galathea," that is to say, "a place of a skull, they gave him vinegar to drink mingled with gall; and when he had tasted thereof, he would not drink. And they crucified him, and parted his garments, casting lots, that it might be fulfilled, which was spoken by the prophet. They parted my garments among them, and upon my vesture did they cast lots. And sitting down, they watched him there." Could I draw your attention to the text this evening, verse 36? Sitting down, they watched him there. I'd like to bring your attention just to this thought this evening, just a brief thought. Watching Jesus die. Put yourself in that moment in human history. Put yourself with these who are seated, watching Jesus Christ die. All of us, no matter where we're from, how old we are, no matter what our educational background may be this evening, all of us will fit in one of the categories that we see in this passage this evening, because all of us have some response to make to the awful death of Jesus Christ. And your response is not dependent on others' responses. You must answer to God yourself for your response to how and what Jesus Christ did when he died. Could I draw your attention, first of all, to those who looked and laughed? Verse 29, the Bible says this, "And when they had platted a crown of thorns, they put it upon his head and a reed in his right hand, and they bowed the knee before him." Notice this, "and mocked him, saying, hail, king of the Jews! These soldiers took all the goodness and all the virtue and all the purity and holiness of the Lord Jesus Christ, and instead of seeing him for who he was, they laughed at him and mocked him to scorn." There's probably no one in here this evening who would openly defy the Lord Jesus Christ and laugh at him. May I say to you, as nice as you look in your Wednesday best, there are people in this meeting tonight who have never believed on the Lord Jesus Christ. You have never received in your place his payment for sin. And in essence, what you do to his sacrifice is to mock it, is to scorn it, is to belittle it and to laugh. We might as well shake our fist in the face of the Lord Jesus and say, your death means nothing to me. I do not need your death. I'm fine the way I am. And there may be somebody here tonight who, maybe not outwardly, but inwardly, you've mocked the crucifixion of our Savior, his death, his burial, and his resurrection because you have never availed yourself of his cleansing blood. No one would be bold enough this evening to stand up in an audience like this and say, I defy Christ, and I will not believe in him. But if you've not believed in him, that is exactly what you've done. There were those who looked and laughed. To not receive Christ is to mock him. Could I draw your attention to another group? We find this group in verse 35. Would you notice with me? The Bible says here, "And they crucified him, and parted his garments, casting lots, that it might be fulfilled, which was spoken by that prophet. They parted my garments among them, and upon my vesture did they cast lots." These people looked and looted. The Lord Jesus Christ, in his hour of death, in the most crucial time in all of human history, before or after, as Jesus Christ is laying upon the cross and nails are being put into his hands and feet, as he is there and he cries out, "Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do." In all of that, there were people who were gambling over his robes. They wanted something from Jesus, but not Christ himself. Now think about this this evening, the lucky gambler who by chance won the robe of Jesus, who put no doubt that robe upon himself, and perhaps could have even been noticed as someone who followed the Lord Jesus Christ. He looked like the Lord Jesus. He had an outer garment and vesture that looked like a virtuous Savior had met him. But in fact, though he wore the robes, he did not have the transforming power of salvation in his own life. Maybe tonight, you're like this man. You look like a Christian. You act like a Christian. You speak like a Christian. And if anyone around you were to know your real heart, your doubts, your lack of assurance, no one would even think that you were that way, because you look so much like a Christian. These men looted. What Christ had to loot is to take property away from your enemy. You say, what about, I'm not God's enemy, and God's not my enemy. If you have yet to trust Christ as your Savior, you are God's enemy. You say, well, I can't seem to find Christ. You can't seem to find Christ for the same reason a bank robber can't seem to find a policeman, because you're guilty of your sin and you're confronted with the truth and righteousness and purity of Jesus Christ. My friend, you may look like and sound like and act like a Christian, but Jesus Christ knows your heart. Have you believed on the name of the only begotten Son of God, or are you looking and looting this evening? There are fathers here, mothers perhaps, sons and daughters, grandparents even. And if your family were to think, they would think, oh, he's a very good Christian. But it's all been an act. And tonight, Jesus Christ, in mercy, once more, comes to you to say, there is enough blood that you may be cleansed. There is enough mercy that you can be saved. Don't mock what Christ has done. Don't simply take for granted what Christ has done, but believe on the Lord Jesus Christ and be saved. Would you look with me in verse 41? The Bible says likewise also, "The chief priests, mocking him with the scribes and elders, said, 'He saved others; himself he cannot save. If he be the king of Israel, let him now come down from the cross, and we will believe him.' These people looked and lied. They said, if Jesus Christ will meet our conditions, if he will do what we want him to do, then and only then will we believe on him." And there are people here today who, much like these folks at the cross that day, as they sat and watched Jesus die, they may say something like this, I would believe on the Lord Jesus Christ if he would prove himself to me. I was talking to a gentleman in Edinburgh the other night. After the service, he came and we were talking about Christ. And he said, I would believe in Jesus Christ if I could empirically prove him scientifically. He's saying the same thing these men said. If you'll meet my conditions, then I'll believe. And Jesus Christ put the lie to these men. Why? Because what did Jesus Christ do? Oh, he did, after he died, come down from the cross, didn't he? His friends took his body, and they laid it in a borrowed tomb. He did come down from the cross. And three days later, something amazing that has never happened in all of human history before, three days after he died on the cross, the Bible tells us that Jesus Christ arose and is alive forevermore. And that's a great place to say amen. Why? Jesus Christ defeated death and hell and the grave, and Jesus Christ, and he alone, is able to save lost sinners like you. And if you come to him tonight, don't come to him with conditions. Come to him with surrender, because he deserves all of you, not just a part of you. There is so much to be said about the Lord Jesus Christ. And these people, after Jesus Christ rose from the dead, you remember what they do? They pay the people who were guarding the tomb, and even though they know the truth in their hearts, they reject the truth. Don't be like those who looked and lied. Some of you have made promises to God in very dark hours, and you've said to God, God, if you'll get me out of this, if you'll save my life, if you'll help my family members, I'll live for you and I'll serve you. And you lied to God. And he hasn't forgotten what you've said. Do you know the Lord Jesus Christ? Don't look and lie. Lastly, could I draw your attention just to a few very specific things? Verse 46, the Bible says this, "In the ninth hour, Jesus cried out with a loud voice, saying, Eli, Eli, lamas abakhtanai, that is to say, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me?" Verse 54, "Now when the centurion and the people that were with him watching Jesus saw the earthquake and those things that were done, they feared greatly, saying, truly, this was the Son of God." Here are people that looked and listened, and they heard what Jesus said. And they heard the sayings from the cross, and they very particularly understood what Jesus Christ was saying, and they heard it all. But we never have any record of them having their life changed by the power of the gospel. And you may be like these who've looked and listened, and you know the gospel so well, you can quote John 3:16 by heart. You know all the songs, but you don't know the Savior. You know all the hymns, but you don't know him. What is wrong with you? Come to a Savior who welcomes lost sinners, just as they are, broken in their sin, and gives to them new life and forgiveness and a new beginning. That's how great our risen Savior is. And he can't just look at us and excuse our sin. But he looks at us and says, you need a Savior. Could I draw your attention on a very positive note to this close, chapter 27, verse 55? "And many women were there beholding afar off, which followed Jesus from Galilee, ministering unto him, among which was Mary Magdalene, and Mary, the mother of James and Joseph, and the mother of Zebedee's children." Can I say this? Lastly, "these looked and lived." Oh, what a wonderful end to this passage. There were people who lied and looted. There were people who ignored what Christ was doing and took advantage of it for their own gain. But there were some women in that society in that day, those who were not as powerful or authoritative as other men were. But isn't it just like Jesus Christ to help the lowliest and the most humble? You say, how do you know these women were changed by the power of the gospel? Well, I read in Acts, chapter 1, the Bible tells us this, "In the upper room, these all continued with one accord in prayer and supplication with the women, and Mary, the mother of Jesus, and with his brethren." And you know what they had? They had the fellowship of the Holy Spirit. They had the fellowship of the saints. Why? Their lives were changed when they believed on the Lord Jesus Christ. I hope you're here to listen to singing tonight. The choir has worked to try to learn these songs, and I hope they've been a blessing. But far greater than listening to singing is coming to know Christ. I cannot look into your heart, but you know if you're saved or lost. And if you're lost, would you come to believe on the Lord Jesus Christ? Believe the gospel and be saved tonight. As we preach the gospel, these sing the gospel. It changes people's lives.
Three days had passed in Jesus, God's Son was crucified. His body wrapped and placed in a tomb.
Well, we're so thankful for all that the choir is learning and proclaiming throughout the United Kingdom. Thank you for your prayers for them. You know, the Crown College Choir would have never come to Northern Ireland had it not been for a friend of ours named Clifford Black. Today just happens to be his 60th birthday and just a few years ago, he went on to glory. But he was such a very dear friend to Pastor and Mrs. Sexton and to all the folks at Crown College. And he had two favorite songs. And every time we brought a group, small or large, up, he made them sing these songs. He didn't ask. He would, he had a way of getting his way, didn't he? And so Brother Clifford Black, we remember him and his encouragement to us today. And they're going to sing, among other songs that they'll be singing in this set, "Complete in Thee," and then at the close of the service, they'll have another hymn. And that'll be a blessing, we trust. After this set of music, Pastor Derek Moreland is going to come and bring a brief challenge from the Word of God. We're very grateful for how God has worked and brought Pastor Moreland from the Oxford Baptist Chapel to Temple Baptist Church in Powell, Tennessee. And God is using him in a wonderful way and we're so thankful he's able to be here and we're all able to be here with you all this evening. You pray for him. In just a little while, after this set of songs, he'll come and bring a message from God's Word.
Yeh 11:19 Arise, my soul, arise! Shake off thy guilty fears! The bleeding sacrifice in my behalf appears! Before the throne my shorty stands! My name is written on his hands! I'm bleeding wounds he bears! Received on Calvary! They bore it factual press! They strongly flee for me! Forgive them, oh, forgive, they cry! Forgive them, oh, forgive, they cry! Nor let that ransom sinner die! My God is reconciled! His barbening voice I hear! He owns me for his child! I can no longer fear! With confidence I now draw nigh! With confidence I now draw nigh! And Father of a Father, cry! Consume me, Lord! Fill me with your fire! Let others see your power in my life! Keep me on the altar of your perfect will! Make me a willing sacrifice! Consume me, Lord! Give your all to the Savior as a living sacrifice! Allow him his purpose to fulfill! Consume me, Lord! Fill me with your fire! Let others see your power in my life! Keep me on the altar of your perfect will! Make me a willing sacrifice! Consume me, Lord! Lelt me, oh me! Fill me! Use me! Consume me, Lord! Fill me with your fire! Let others see your power in my life! Keep me on the altar of your perfect will! Make me a willing sacrifice! Consume me, Lord! Consume me, Lord! Consume me, Lord! And now ye take the first step when I don't know the way! Each turn is so uncertain, I learn to walk by faith! But he gave me a promise that he would never leave! He will lead and guide me, oh Lord, I do believe! Lead me, Lord! I will follow! Lead me, Lord! I will go! You have called me, I will answer! Lead me, Lord! I will go! The sins for me are perfect, I never need to fear! For though at times I feel alone, I know that he is near! My heart desires to follow, I'm willing to obey! Take my hand and lead me, I'll follow all the way! Lead me, Lord! I will follow! Lead me, Lord! I will go! You have called me, I will answer! Lead me, Lord! I will go! You have called me, I will answer! Lead me, Lord! I will go!
We'd like you to stand with us if you would please and take your hymn book and turn to hymn number 65. Dr. McCray is going to come and lead us in a wonderful hymn. Oh, how sweet the glorious message, "Simple Faith May Claim." Yesterday, today, forever, Jesus is the same. Aren't you grateful? The blood of Jesus Christ still has power to save. Let's sing with all our hearts hymn number 65. When this hymn is concluded, Pastor Derek Moreland is going to come and bring a brief challenge from the Word of God. And we're so thankful that you're here this evening. Let's lift up the name of Jesus Christ as we sing.
Oh, my sweet and glorious message, simple faith may claim! Yesterday, today, forever, Jesus is the same! Still he loves to save the sinful, heal the sick and lame! Cheer the mourner still the tempest glory to his name! Yesterday, today, forever, Jesus is the same! All may change, but Jesus never! Glory to his name! Glory to his name! Glory to his name! All may change, but Jesus never! Glory to his name! Him who pardonerring Peter never need a fear! He that came to faithful Thomas, all I doubt will fear! He who led the love disciple on his bosom rest! Bind thee still with love and tenderness upon his friends! Yesterday, today, forever, Jesus is the same! All may change, but Jesus never! Glory to his name! Glory to his name! Glory to his name! All may change, but Jesus never! Glory to his name! He who bid the raging miller's quack upon the sea! Still can hush our wildest tempests at Galilee! He who went and prayed and languished in hessemoni! Rings with loss each top of tramp that ate our agony! Yesterday, today, forever, Jesus is the same! All may change, but Jesus
All may change, but Jesus never. Glory to his name. Glory to his name. Glory to his name. All may change, but Jesus never. Glory to his name. As not only one to amaze us with then to abide. So through all thy way he walked if ever near our side. Soon again we shall be holy nation for the day. But will still be this same Jesus as he went away.
Sing it, God.
Yesterday, today, forever, Jesus is the same. All may change, but Jesus never. Glory to his name. Glory to his name. Glory to his name. All may change, but Jesus never. Glory to his name.
Thank you. You may be seated. The choir is going to sing one more just before we open briefly at the Word. His way is perfect. And I want you to think about the words of this hymn as they sing it. Oftentimes, life leads us through difficulties and tragedies, and we find ourselves in places we never imagined ourselves to be. But through it all, we can trust an all-knowing sovereign God, can't we? His way is perfect.
And the way is strong and true, and the future I hope for. And my strength has healed me, and my tears unending flow. The way fills with sorrow, and the tempest finds my soul. There's something I know for sure, my eyes in control.
His way is perfect. His way is perfect. Though I don't understand his wise and loving plan. His way is perfect. His way is perfect. Take my life and make a vessel purified. Christ be glorified. His way is best. When the toils of high far come, and my heart is torn with pain. I fall need the burden of a cross I cannot bear. Even then I am hopeful, for I do not walk alone. Christ will work all things for good. My God is in control. His way is perfect. His way is perfect. Though I don't understand his wise and loving plan. His way is perfect. His way is perfect. Take my life and make a vessel purified. Christ be glorified. His way is best. Christ be glorified.
His way is best.
His way is best.
Where you may be seated. Let me just briefly speak to you from Luke chapter 13. If you have a Bible, would you turn there with me, please? I know we, the hour is late, and I'm going to do my best to be brief. I know that's nothing short of a miracle for a preacher. But I want to share with you just a brief thought. This is a text that God impressed upon my heart many years ago, and I have intentionally endeavored to preach from this text at least once every year, usually at the beginning of every year. Luke chapter 13. We'll begin reading in verse number one. There were present at that season some that told him of the Galileans, whose blood Pilate had mingled with their sacrifices. And Jesus answering said unto them, Suppose ye that these Galileans were sinners above all the Galileans, because they suffered such things? I tell you, nay. But except ye repent, ye shall all likewise perish. Were those eighteen upon whom the tower in Salome fell and slew them, think ye that they were sinners above all men that dwelt in Jerusalem? I tell you, nay. But except ye repent, ye shall all likewise perish. Christ was dealing with a problem that is still a problem in humanity today. We oftentimes are judging everybody else's life and tragedies and problems, and we often think we have the answer as to why bad things happen to people. That's what happened with Job, wasn't it? His friends thought that the reason all of these things were happening was because he wasn't right with God. And the Lord Jesus wants us to take our eyes for just a moment off of everybody else and to look at our own hearts. And for just a moment or two tonight, I want you to do just that, please. I'd like to ask you to keep your seat for a moment. I know that just about every thought imaginable will come into your mind to try to get you to walk up, stand up and walk out. But would you hold your place for just a few moments? And think about your own self. Jesus twice says, except ye repent. Repentance isn't just for the unconverted. You realize that, right? Have you been born again? Do you know Christ as your Savior? Repentance is still for you. In fact, it's not that we repented many years ago. We began repenting when we were converted, right? We should learn to live a life of repentance. And Jesus brings us into verse number six, and He brings us into a little parable which was specifically designed for the nation of Israel, but I believe is applicable to us today. Look at it with me. He spake also this parable. A certain man had a fig tree planted in his vineyard. And he came and sought fruit thereon and found none. Then said he unto the dresser of his vineyard, Behold, these three years I come seeking fruit on this fig tree and find none. Cut it down. Why cumbereth it the ground? And he answering said unto him, Lord, let it alone this year also, till I shall dig about it and dung it; and if it bear fruit, well. And if not, then after that thou shalt cut it down. Would you look here for just a moment? All of us are on a journey in this life. My pastor used to say the Christian life is a series of new beginnings. Aren't you glad that God is not just a God of second chances, but of third, and fourth, and fifth, and sixth? Aren't you glad He continues to be merciful with each new day? That's why we read His mercies are new every morning. There's a sense that every Christian needs a conversion. You say, hold on, I've already been converted. But so had Peter when Jesus said, Behold, Satan hath desired to have thee, that he may sift thee as wheat. But I have prayed for thee; and when thou art what? Converted. Strengthened the brethren. And it might be that some of you this evening have been born again, but you need a proper conversion. You need God to open your eyes and help you to realize you have wasted time since your conversion. Would you look here for a moment? If God were to take all of us home tonight, if this were the end of it all, the night when we breathe our final breath, or when Jesus were to return to take us unto Himself, would you be pleased with the way you've lived thus far? Or better yet, would our final breath, or when Jesus were to return to take us unto Himself, would you be pleased with the way you've lived thus far? Or better yet, would He be pleased? If today were you had been born again, can you say with confidence, I am His and He is mine? If confidence, I am His and He is mine? If so, there's an expectation for you. God has not saved you, as we say in America, to sit, soak, and sour. God didn't save you to occupy a pew, or a bench, or a chair on the Lord's day, week after week, and to soak in the Word of God and do nothing with it. He saved you to live for Him. And the Scriptures say that when this man, this allegory of a man planting a fig tree in his vineyard, he visits his fig tree, looking, expecting something. He's expecting fruit. Now let me ask you tonight, please, how much fruit is in your life? Fruit is the evidence of life, is it not? Fruit is the evidence of the kind of tree that it is. It doesn't make the tree a certain tree. We don't say that because apples are on the tree that it makes the apple tree an apple tree. That's why we don't say our good works or our fruit does not make us a Christian, but it reveals to people what we are. And so the fruit in your life should reveal to everyone who you are. Look, if you've been born again by the Spirit of God, if you've been indwelt by the Holy Spirit of God, and if you are walking after the Spirit, filled with the Spirit, then don't you think there ought to be the fruit of the Spirit in your life? The fruit of the Spirit is this: love, joy, peace. Let's just stop with those three. Look here, how much love is present in your life? I don't understand it. But for some reason, some of the most unloving people on the planet are those who call themselves Christians. Am I right? And we're told that we ought to be marked by this characteristic more than any, that of love. The fruit of the Spirit is love, joy. Why is it that some of the most sour human beings are those who call themselves Christians? You go to meetings, in a meeting or out of a meeting, and people's faces look like this. And you think, hold on a moment. If anyone ought to be joyful, it ought to be the people of God. It's evidence that you have life and hope and something's different inside of you. And that third aspect of the fruit of the Spirit, love, joy, and peace. When everybody else is having a hard time with changing society, and changing world, and changing laws, and degradation and sin on the rise, Christians ought to be perfectly at peace because the prince of peace is our Savior. Do you have fruit? Is there evidence in your life that you belong to Him and He belongs to you? Is there evidence in your life that you're growing in the grace and knowledge of our Lord and Savior? There's an expectation. And not just an expectation. Look, there's an examination. He doesn't just want us to bear fruit, but He then comes behind and checks to see if we are bearing fruit. Some of us are in for a rude awakening when we meet Jesus. Some of us are in for a rude awakening when we stand on judgment day and meet our Savior face to face. And we think it'll all be sunshine and lollipops and games. We've wasted time below, but we'll be thoroughly embarrassed and hang our head with shame on that day when we realize just how little we did for Christ. The Bible says He came, year after year, examining this tree, expecting this tree to bear fruit. I wonder tonight, look, we all get a little bit a little bit more holy when the preacher walks around. We all get a little bit more spiritual when the elders, or the deacons, or whatever title you want to give, the evangelist, whenever somebody of any kind of title walks around, all of a sudden, we become a little bit more spiritual. Forget about all that for just a moment. What about when God comes around? What about when He visits your life and He's doing it according to this parable in some regular fashion? He's examining us. Look, I'd stop worrying about what the people in the church think and start worrying about what He thinks. Look, you can fool me, and you can fool the minister, and you can fool all the eldership, but you cannot fool God. He sees through all the facade. Look, we've learned, let's be honest, we've learned in the Western world, we've learned how to look like, talk like, act like Christians, and yet lack the substance inside. The Scriptures tell us that the master of the vineyard gets angry when he comes three years, year after year after year, expecting fruit. And by the way, I'm not the most clever chap in the world, but I do know that a fig tree bears figs in open sight. You don't have to dig in the ground to find the figs. You don't have to split the tree open to find the figs. They hang in clear, plain sight. If you're a child of God, it ought to be obvious that you're a child of God. Stop pretending. And when he didn't find any fruit, he says, in verse number seven, these three years, behold, these three years I come seeking fruit on this fig tree, and I find none. Look what he says. You know what? No problem. Give it another chance. Is that what he says? No, no, no. Cut it down. Cut it down. Why cumbereth it? The ground is wasting space and wasting opportunity, and it's wasting resources. Look, I wonder, look here for a moment, please. I wonder how much we've wasted, how many sermons we've taken in and we wasted. We did nothing with them. I wonder how many opportunities we wasted. We could have been faithful in the Lord's work, but we didn't do it. How much has been wasted? And he says, enough is enough, cut it down. I'm reminded of what the prophet Isaiah was told to say to the nation of Israel in Isaiah chapter 5. Let me just read briefly. He says this, Isaiah chapter 5, in that famous portion of Scripture, I will sing to my well-beloved a song of my beloved, touching his vineyard. My well-beloved had a vineyard in a very fruitful hill. Watch this. He fenced it, gathered out the stones thereof, planted it with the choicest vine, built a tower in the midst of it, and also made a winepress therein. And he looked, that it should bring forth grapes, and it brought forth wild grapes. And now, o inhabitants of Jerusalem, men of Judah, judge, I pray you betwixt me and my beloved, what could have been done more to my vineyard that I have not done in it? You may say, well, hold on a moment. It's a little bit extreme for the Lord to say, cut it down. That's a little bit harsh, is it not? No, no, He probably stands today and says, like He did then, I could not have done anything more for you. He saved you by the blood of Jesus Christ, and He puts you in a body of believers, the body of Christ, a local church. He gave you faithful ministers, and He gave you His word. He put His Holy Spirit inside of you. He gave you songs to sing. What more could He have done? What more could He have done? Let me give you some good news, and then I'll finish. The good news is we have an interceder. The good news is, as we heard the choir sing a moment ago, there's an advocate who pleads on our behalf. And we find him standing here in this parable, and he answering in verse number eight and said, Lord, let it alone this year also. Give it one more year. Look here for a moment. I don't know about you, but I'm tired of wasting time, tired of wasting opportunities. I'm tired of waking up in the morning and regretting that I wasted yesterday and determining I'm going to be different today, and then finding at the end of the day I did just the same thing as yesterday. I'm tired of it. And if I'm tired of it, how much more is our Lord tired of it? But we have one who pleads with nail-pierced But we have one who pleads with nail-pierced hands before the throne of Almighty God. The Bible teaches us He is seated at the right hand of God the Father, where He ever lives, to make intercession for His saints. Aren't you glad for that? Aren't you glad that He's pleading? Even tonight, He's pleading with the Father. "Give her one more year. Give Him one more year." I wonder, look here for a moment, what if this is your last year? What if this is your last chance? What if it's mine? If God has said, "Enough is enough. I'm fed up with you. I'm tired of giving you opportunities and chances that you wipe on your feet, you wipe your feet carelessly on top of. I'm tired of it." What if this is your last chance? What are you going to do differently? Because it's foolish for us to ask God for another chance and then waste it again. One more year. There are people that we know and love who were here the last time we met like this, who are not here tonight. And I don't believe for a second that they were taken because of their sin, but the truth is, they're not here. I've written at least three names down, and I'm sure there's more. Three names down of genuine, sincere, dear friends of ours who were here the last time we met like this, and they're gone tonight. And if God allows us to come back in a year or two years' time to do this same thing again, I know, I know, I know that some of you will be gone. And it might even be me. And if that's the case, what needs to change tonight? Not tomorrow, not next week? Don't be like that foolish Roman who said, "Wait for a more convenient time." There is no more convenient time than tonight to get right with God, to surrender your life to Him, to determine that I'll follow you, Lord, holding nothing back. No reserves, no retreats and no regrets. C.T. Stud, you know the story, wrote that beautiful hymn, "Only one life will soon be passed; only what's done for Christ will last." Everything else will melt away, but that which is done for the Savior will speak on into eternity. If we had to sift through the nonsense of our life and find what really matters, I wonder how much would be left? If you were sifted, what would be left? I don't know about you, and I don't know how much time God is going to give you, but I do know about me that I don't want to waste another moment. Many years ago, I preached my very first traveler gypsy funeral. It was for an Irish traveler, an Irish gypsy man. The man was forty-two years old. He was an alcoholic. And when I met him, he was forty-one years old, and his brother asked me, pleaded with me to go and try to win him to the Savior. And I went with my little Bible and visited him, and I sat in his caravan and preached Christ to him. In the space of an hour, he drunk two bottles of vodka. At the end, he was so incoherent that I couldn't speak with him, and so I wrote my name and telephone number in my Bible and the flyleaf of my Bible, and I gave it to him. And I said, "When you sober up and God gets your attention, you call me." Three months later, he called me from a hospital bed. He was dying. His liver was failing, and they refused to give him a liver transplant because of his alcohol, his drunken state. He cried over the phone and asked me if I'd come see him, and I drove to an half hour south to a little hospital in Tunbridge Wells to meet this man. I knelt by his bedside, and he called upon the name of the Lord for salvation. I believe God saved him. Soon as we finished praying, he said to me, "Pastor, do you think it's too late for me?" I said, "No, it's never too late." "Can I still serve God?" I said, "Of course you can." He determined from that day forward, whether he got out of the hospital bed or not, that he would live for Jesus, and he began to do that. He began to talk to every nurse and every doctor and every grounds crew member about Jesus until they got so fed up with him that they had to move him to another hospital. Honestly. He got moved to King's College Hospital in London. And when we got there, he called me and he said, "Pastor, do you think God could use me?" I said, "He is using you." I said, "What, you pray now?" I said, "Of course." We were in the lobby. I wheeled him down to get a coffee in the cafe in the bottom of the hospital, and I prayed. And I was praying kind of quietly because I didn't want to disturb the other customers. And when I finished praying, he started praying. And he said, "Dear Lord!" And everybody jumped. And he was bold. And he did more in those few short weeks. He died just a little while later. He did more in those few short weeks than many people do in a lifetime. When he died, they asked me to take his funeral, and of course I obliged. That was the first gypsy funeral I had taken, and I was frightened to death. I was told they wouldn't listen to me, that they would mock me while I preached, and they'd be on their phones and they'd be drinking Red Bull and all sorts of other things. And, but you know, when I stood up to preach, I preached from the book of James, and I talked about life being a vapor, you could have heard a pin drop. And every last one of them was captured, I believe, by God's Spirit. At the end of the meeting, they were loading the coffin into the horse-drawn carriage. We were going to go from the church to the graveyard. And as I was standing there waiting with my Bible in hand, five big, rough, tough, Irish gypsy men walked up to me. And I thought, "Here we go, I'm in trouble now." And one of them got up to me and he said, he put his finger on my chest. He said, "I heard what you said in there, and I need to be saved. How can I be saved?" I said, "Well, I'd be happy to help you, but can we get this fellow buried first?" He said, "I don't think you understand." They got on his knees, well, all five of them got on their knees in the car park and said, "Please, help us." I led all five of them to the Lord Jesus on that car parked that day. On the way from the church to the graveside, there was a young man, twenty-seven years old. He got in the car with his brother, and he said, "You know what that man said is absolutely right. I need to get right with God, and you need to get right with God. And when I die, I want a funeral just like this." Four days later, he was killed in a car accident. And they called me to take his funeral. I'm telling you this to tell you that you do not know, we know not what a day may bring forth. We know not what a day may bring forth. So if there is anything worth doing for Christ, would you not start now? The choir is going to sing one closing song. It was Clifford Black's favorite song. "I Want My Life to Count for Jesus." I'm sure you're familiar with it, but I want you to listen to these words because it's more than a song, it's a prayer. Some people say, "I want to make money in life and I want to be successful in life." But can I tell you, at the end of the day, if you could just come to this one thing, "I want my life to count for Jesus," then you would have accomplished something. Let's pray, then they'll sing, and we'll be on our way. Father, help us tonight with whatever time we have left to give it to Thee. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Oh God, I pray in Jesus' name that Thou will bring the sinner to the Savior. And this night, their lives will be changed to walk with God. Bless our brethren as they go back and sisters as they go back to the United States. We pray that that'll go with them. We pray for those on the mainland. Oh God, we pray that Thou will continue to use them. We pray that Thou will bless our dear brother as he leads the work. And Paul, and Lord, we pray in Jesus' name that they're crowned, that Thy name will be glorified, honored. That young men and young women will be prepared for serving and witnessing for Christ. And Lord, we know that the end is not yet, but the best is still to be. Praise the Lord. We thank you for the precious memories we have of Dr. and Mrs. Sexton. Oh God, Heavenly Father, Thou hast called them home. We thank Thee, their labor, their work still goes on. Sever us with Thy blessing tonight. Keep us in Thy fear and put upon us Thy favor. But we pray in Jesus' precious name and for Jesus' sake. Amen.